Yeah, don't be flipping yourself around and falling on and breaking an arm. We don't need that because of our age, we don't heal fast.
Mark.
Yeah.
The title, we have VP three.
Yep.
It's E- ERP.
ERP.
Yep. ERP.
ERP Pro.
Pro, ERP Pro. Wrong direction, turn the volume down. I got a new thing on the phone, I don't know how to turn silent on, I just turned the volume down. Oh, okay, thank you.
Under weed word, are you a voting member or are you just?
The weed, no, I'm not voting member. I'm just observer.
Yep.
Oliver County was asking because there is a voting.
As far as I know, I'm not.
Jean, it's not a buck.
Buck, no. Just a. Pardon? Oh gee. Okay, we'll call the county commission meeting to order. Okay. Approval of the agenda. It's been brought to my attention that then uh nine thirty is not going to be here, so we can remove that from the agenda.
Under other business, I would like to add payroll, budgets and billing to for some discussion.
Okay. I put it. I got it on my sheet, but you're gonna more than likely have to remind me.
Sure.
Anybody else have anything they want to add?
Jonathan Fortner's not gonna be here today for the looking at energy council study, he said he won't be able to make it up until after session's over.
Okay, so we can just cross that off for now.
Yep.
Any other changes?
I think I'd like to have a preliminary discussion about home rule charter.
Okay, we'll just put that under other business, home rule charter, discussion.
Yep.
Anything else?
It's just.
Here. Hearing nothing else, do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll move to approve the amended agenda.
Jamie, do I have a second?
One second.
Rick?
Yep.
Any further discussion, hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. The minutes of the March fifth meeting. I need a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
The dollar amount's still not right, but it's whatever. It's corrected. Okay, so what's, what's the error? Initially, when it was on, there was thirteen thousand five hundred eighty-two, five hundred eighty-three dollars in tens. In the last set of minutes.
So what was the final?
The number that was finally changed back or changed again, the thirty-one thousand five eighty-two, right? It should have been thirty-one thousand five eighty-three point ten to the thirteen five eighty-two.
Well, that's a change then. We'll have to so note that. So it should have said, change, change from thirty-one five eighty-three ten to thirty-one five eighty-two ten.
To thirteen.
The thirteen is the one I believe would be eighty-three, I believe initially it was wrong, but I don't have.
It's just backwards.
No, but there was an eighty-two to eighty-three also.
Right, but I agree with Mark that it should be thirteen two thirty-one, thirty-one to thirteen.
No, I have it.
No, no, I know what you're talking about, okay? I know what you're talking about.
Well, we have to have the minutes correct.
So what we need to do is we'll put this amendment in there, but Jamie, I know exactly what you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay?
I have it.
And I will write it so that it's understandable, yes. I get it, because it was the error, yeah, I get it. So are you guys gonna make an amendment?
Yes.
Amend the motion, because the motion right now is.
I'll make an amendment to the motion to fix. I believe it was the thirteen thousand, it should be five eighty-three point one zero, I have it in my other stack of papers.
It's the thirty-one, it should be from the thirteen to the thirty-one.
I agree.
The thirteen was also incorrect.
Yep.
Right.
Yeah, thirteen's incorrect, incorrect, but it should be going the other direction.
Uh, yeah, like thirteen should be first to thirty-one, but also the eighty-two should be eighty-three in one of the two numbers.
Yep.
I'll second that amendment. Okay, so I gotta write this down.
I showed you my circles, right, Mark, I had it circled, okay?
So it's Jamie and Casey?
Yep.
All right, any other discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, on the amendment, Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye, on the minutes, Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Gosh, that was just the minutes, I hope the meeting don't go this long. Okay, under temp use, planting and zoning, temp use. Energy sand solutions.
I got Andy Thomas's bond paperwork, so.
So we're good?
We're good, if you guys want to.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the energy sands for one, or till December.
Yeah, till December, yeah.
I'll second it.
That was Casey, correct?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed, resolution to rezone from ag to commercial for storage units, Glenn Murray.
Yep, zoning case twenty-five zero two zero one, this is an application from Glenn Murray to rezone a parcel of land from ag to commercial. The proposed, proposed application is to construct thirty twelve by thirty storage units with possibly more in the future. The subject parcel is located approximately thirteen miles north of Beulah. It consists of twelve point six seven acres and is located within the southwest corner of the northwest corner of section sixteen. Township one forty-six, range eighty-seven west of the principal, Meridian, Marsha County. Um, he did change the pad size, um, and notified the planning and zoning board at the meeting. It's going to be six hundred by two hundred versus the thirty by four hundred he had on the application. His approach was approved through the DOT, the units will have power, he's gonna have some outdoor parking and storage. Uh, he's gonna have a security fence with cameras. He went to the water board yesterday, got approval from the water board, got approval from P N Z pending that approval with the water board. So, and then they just wanted the condition that this will only be four storage units.
How many?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Okay. That's just west of the curve?
Just before the curve.
Yes, south of the curve. Right before the curve.
Is that track there, okay, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve, I'll second it.
Oh, we come, hold on a second. Rick? Mark? Any further discussion?
Um, I guess as far as the water board meeting yesterday, then it was discussed that this would be just permitted for the point six acres where the first unit is gonna go. And then if he wanted any additional, he would have to come back for review. And then there is also a detention area to the north side of the property, and that would have to remain in existence. So the water board has given him a permit for the point six acre development, but the full twelve point six seven acres would like to be rezoned.
So leave the rest of the twelve acres as ag, but just the point six to commercial?
It would all be rezoned commercial, but the point six acres is the only thing permitted for development. So it'd be like building a house, and if you wanna build a garage, you'd have to come back and get another building permit.
And that's for the water.
Come back for the other one acres.
And that's for the water.
Building permits, so, I mean, as far as, you'll just have to go to the water board, I'm assuming, to get more approval, because on my end, I don't think there's anything.
Right.
Cause I'm, we're just rezoning it, and then it's already getting, the whole thing is gonna be rezoned commercial.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
Casey, did they say why they did it that way, or like, why did you guys choose to do it that way?
Well, it's nice to know what's going to be developed, you know, is it gonna be a twelve acre paved parking lot, or is it gonna be one more unit of the same size, or is it gonna be three more units, or, you know? So we have a little bit of checks and balances of what the development is going to be in the future.
So if you want him to build anything, you want him to go back to the water board?
I visited with Glenn Murray last night and explained that to him.
And I get that, I just thought that that, that type of stuff would be going through land, who's like, the water board really wouldn't have the authority for that, but maybe.
Any development would affect the stormwater that runs off of that area, so being as there are people downstream from that. Apex Engineering felt it would be appropriate to reevaluate in the future if there was more development.
So what we're approving today is twelve point six seven acres to be rezoned as commercial.
Correct.
And if there's an issue with the water board, he ha, he has to deal with the water board on that aspect. We're just approving that it be rezoned commercial.
Yep, any future development would have to be reviewed again.
Okay.
Yep, should be good.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Rick? Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, you wanna sign it now or later?
I don't care, you. What would you recommend, I would recommend I sign them now. You guys are getting the know me all too well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We are moving right along, let's go, our state's attorney's not here. Uh, we're way early for highway department, let's move to other business, February recorder revenues of four thousand three hundred eighty-two dollars and sixty cents, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve.
One second.
Jamie, Rick? Any discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed. Oh boy. Uh, twenty twenty-five fire emergency and ban restrictions.
Um, we have a deal in your packet here of Alice.
We just have to implement what she has here.
Yep. So Oliver County put theirs into effect last week, I think it's getting to be pretty much statewide. I would make a motion to implement a burn ban.
I have, um.
Just a minute.
Oh, no, I don't want to.
Okay, Casey, I got a motion to approve the, uh, approve and or putting a effect, uh, burn ban, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Jamie?
Discussion.
Yes.
Had many calls about this, once they saw that Oliver County wanted to go into effect, and many individuals, and even some of the dispatch staff have meant like, this is gonna be an ongoing thing, we could get an inch of moisture tomorrow and it could come back off, I think the communities are a little upset that they never know when it's on or off, and people are still burning, and it kind of ties people into things, and I ju, I'm not sure if we need to play the game of constantly putting it on and off.
So I think the discussion lasts fall when this is put on.
And I didn't like it that either.
Right, but what it does is it gives a, a clear liability to whoever does start a fire, you know, so if the county or a neighbor or someone has damage, then this gives liability to whoever started the fire.
Right, I don't disagree with that.
I don't disagree with that, but also there's a lot of active gods and nothing gets.
Personally, I think it's just prudent to do it. If, you've seen what happened south, uh, going all in there just recently, and uh, I know a person that was personally affected by that, and, um, you know, I'm not trying to place any blame, but I, I just think it's one of those things that it's just prudent to put it on, because it puts people on notice that conditions are ripe for, um, well, catastrophe, and so I, I tend to lean towards thinking that it's something we need to do.
Right, and it, I mean, I agree with that, I mean, uh, as it states in here, no open burning, including a burning of leaves and grass, I mean, it's something you, you purposely do, and we, we all understand, there's a bale or catches fire and then starts a fire, there's nothing you can do to, you know, prevent that, we understand that.
That's completely different.
Put in place some common sense, can't use common sense, I guess, in, in this form, but you, you know, just regular purposely burning something in the open right now is what we want to avoid, and that's what this burn ban would put into place, so.
I also would like that she discusses it with the fire chiefs, and maybe she has, but I think we need to have our fire department inputs on these also. She did tell me she had. Okay.
Most of the time, this is initiated by our fire chiefs, they, they request it.
Even when they, when they.
Most of the time, but not all of the time, that's why I'm saying it.
Even like.
Okay.
Took an off last spring, we had to, we had to go through the fire chiefs, I know that.
I called them myself that time also, so, any further discussion? Hearing none, Casey?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jean, aye, motion passed, okay. Uh, I put on, oh, I guess I forgot to mention it, so, it's not on there.
You called me, Oliver.
I said, uh, software discussion at nine forty-five, our state's attorney, we, you weren't here, so I said, we can't discuss that until our state's attorney's here, but if you're here.
There's other things that need to be discussed that we'd like you here for though, so if you got, that we can jump to.
Okay. What next item would you guys like to have? We got a lot of them under twenty twenty-five budget discussion? Landfill ninety-five thousand dollar transfer?
You can't have budget discussions until we can get month end numbers or current numbers, so.
Okay.
Software discussion.
Let's have the software.
This goes into software, which goes into the three things I added, so.
Okay, we can, it's uh, scheduled for nine forty-five, but we can jump right into it, our state's attorney's here, so, um, software discussion.
All right, give you a bit of an update. This has been more of a nightmare than it's possible. We've had some issues with paychecks and things of that sort, and folks, that's just the tip of the iceberg, and went through with what Carmen's been doing, and the problem we have is that this should have been up and running completely. And just working out a little bit of polishing by the first of this year, all this training, it didn't get started till the end of last year, very end of last year at that. They're just beginning to do now. Carmen's following their directions, and each time she talks to them, she gets different directions. Now, I'm the last person probably in this county to discuss computers and programming and input with. But I know this basic, if they don't give you the right way to put it in, it ain't gonna come out right. And if they keep changing the way you're supposed to put it in, how in God's name is Carmen ever gonna get it right? The next step is tax wise. Dawn is here, so I'll talk a little bit about that. She was supposed to be up and running with this before September of last year, because between September and February are her busiest times. And then there's all kinds of things for discounts and things of this sort that Dawn can give you a lot more information on. September to the end of February is a no-go. They pushed, they pushed, they pushed. Guess where they popped last week to tell us they were gonna start with tax wise with Car, with Dawn's office, September. Now, I have sent an email to them and told them this is unacceptable. I've told them there's been numerous breaches, I've discussed this before, the commission before. What they're selling is something that will not work.
But, uh, there are other counties using this, have we reached out to them, I haven't heard any negative from other counties.
That's the next thing I'm going to, the old version, we have some counties, a few, who've been on it for six, seven years. And all the wonderful things they said about it, and the fact that at that time, which is now changed, that was about the only alternative we had to update. I've reached out to a couple of counties, Dawn has reached out to some that are in the training, so has Carmen at my direction. We have many counties experiencing the same problem, I personally spoke with Montreal County State's Attorney, and his auditors having a devil of a time. Uh, there are some things that could be discussed, should be discussed, not necessarily right at this moment. But that would be in executive session. Because we are looking, what I'm asking for is permission from the commission for myself and the departments that are usal, utilizing this. And that would include Carmen's department, uh, H R, Dawn, and, uh, the tax equalization. The auditor's office is only partially up and running and not running in any way that's supposed to be working. I want to be able to go in with the authority from the county and say, all right, I need a drop dead date, and it's not gonna be twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-seven. The way this was supposed to go is they were supposed to come up from Texas and meet with multiple counties. Back when we were looking at this at the beginning of twenty-three, that was one thing, and I, there was three of you who were here at that time, where I made it adamant that we were not gonna pay a trainer to come up from Texas to work just with us, and then the next county have to pay for a full truck for them to do it. They proposed it would be number one, in-person training with groups of counties, and that we would be part of the first group. And no, they have admitted in conference calls with Carmen, Dawn, myself. Uh, there was a couple others, I forget who, but they remember, where they number one, admitted they bit off more than they can chew, and number two, admitted in these different phone calls, that they've had a high turnover in staff. They also admitted that they've had problems with the software.
Todd, what's our re, there's been multiple breaches here, but what's, what's our recourse?
Well, I wanna put their feet to the fire, and if we can't get something that I can report back here by, if not next commission meeting, the meeting after, I wanna declare them, uh, in breach, go back to AS four hundred for now, and look elsewhere. And then we might end up in litigation, and that I will only discuss in executive session.
That was gonna be my, my.
Do we not have the capabilities to run AS four hundred right now, I, I feel, as someone who's been in multiple entities of going to new systems, we ran dual systems for years sometimes. Like, are we not doing that?
Here's the problem we have, Tyler's software will not work with AS four hundred.
I understand that, but if you don't have, if you don't know that Tyler's working correctly, or it's not doing the functions you need, you should then be going, using your old software.
Yeah, AS four hundred is no longer supported by anything, though, so I mean, it's.
Now, we've got local support for the time being, this is a patch.
Well, what we have right now is not working, so we can't just say, well, we're not using either one.
No, we're not, but we didn't do dual because I got pressure from them and from our AS four hundred person, you can only do one. If you start do, do both of them, it, it will be a dark hole, and I can't go into a dark hole, so everything's been, not that we've been doing, like Dawn's part of it. Dawn is still using AS four hundred, right? That half, it's just what I'm doing as.
Well, we gotta, we just simply gotta get this fixed, and it, it isn't a matter, it's getting to the point where it's not even, we'll deal with the dollars later, and that's what we got our state's attorney here to do, is you, you could deal with the, with the contract and the dollars that we're gonna be owed later. But we need to get this fixed, I, and I, I might, I don't have the answer, I need someone to come up with an answer, because we gotta be running payroll. We gotta pay our employees, we can't just be throwing darts at the wall and they're getting checks that are here and there, bills that aren't getting paid, budgets, we need our departments to get their budget sheets. And a lot of that derives off the software that's being used by our, um, auditors, depart, auditing department. We, we need to get this done, so if someone can come up with a, a solution and an answer, we need it fixed.
That's.
The dollar amount we'll deal with after the fact.
Well, what I'm asking you is the authority to be the one who goes to bat with them and tells them how it's gonna be, or where they're gonna go.
There was some other stuff too that came up, I mean, I agree with what you had said, but yeah, I don't think it was totally everything, I did talk to Morton, I talked to Burley, they've had it for, since twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen. They all liked it, I actually talked to, uh, they have a new one up here in Dunn County, they like it up there too. But they had their training problems too, and it's not like, you just, like, and their suggestion too, you just don't get to throw it away because you don't like it. There's nothing out there anymore to, that you can support it with.
Yes, there is, there's a company out of Morris, Minnesota, C P T, that had most of the state and has cut, has still kept part of the state. At the time, we were looking, they were not interested in bidding. I may have overstepped my bounds a bit, but it was just informational, I asked them to give us an idea of what we would have.
But do we have any counties that are currently working with C P T, or is it gonna be another thing where, I love Tyler, I really love C P T, but then, oh, it doesn't work also? I really have a hard time believing that Tyler does not work.
One thing that they did suggest.
I dug into that, I discussed this with Wayne Engitt personally. They're having the same problems in Montreal that we're having. And what they've done is they've stopped using it, went back to their old system, which, forgive me, I don't remember what theirs was. And they're looking at trying to get something else to go.
So if Tyler is.
We have numerous counties that are having these same problems that are in the training group that our counties have.
I understand that, but if we have all these other counties that are currently using Tyler, why are we not trying to be, reach out to them to see if they can help? I understand that, but if we have all these other counties that are currently using Tyler, why are we not trying to be, reach out to them to see if they can help?
Well, that's what they suggested. They suggested to have.
Across the river said the same thing, so.
They said that they would be willing to come and help rather than the tech. They would have people that would have experienced the same thing and be able to understand and sit and work with, with us too, rather than just.
Logically, that makes sense, but when you're dealing with software, logic doesn't make sense. Because the ones who've got into it early back in two thousand eighteen with the old program, they've been able to get theirs up and running. You'll notice that they've been billing us for updates to the software that we haven't even got, and we put an end to that. Right now, their total contract price was a quarter million dollars. Right now, they have billed us one hundred and ninety-one thousand and change unless that's changed from Monday.
How did you get those numbers? That's all the bills that we paid to Tyler.
Yes.
Okay, so.
All the copies.
Okay, I, I understand that, but like, we have multiple department heads asking for budget numbers and they're not getting them, so if you can get those numbers, how are we gonna get these budget numbers? Nobody has month-end numbers, nobody.
Well, that's right, because.
How are we gonna fix that? What is our plan to fix that?
And I'm working on it. But I'm also working on the payroll, I'm working with them.
Here's what I'm proposing. Here's what I proposed, Carmen, after listening to everything that's going on, watching her, and I've seen this when I've been in her office and she's on training. I can hear her state many times. I put it in that way last time, why can't, why doesn't it go this time? No, it's different. And what's different is she's got a different trainer down there every time.
Well, and it's just every time I even talk to.
So here's, here's a plan for moving forward. Right now, payroll is in there. We'll try to get through one more month of this, and in the process, start taking everything back to AS four hundred, so we start getting these monthly reports. And then, this is the only idea I could come up with. If somebody else has got a better idea, I'm all ears.
I honestly think we need to go back to AS four hundred immediately, not wait another month, because then we're gonna have a third month of payroll incorrect.
Absolutely agree with you.
And I mean, we have three months of payroll, well, two, I can't imagine month three is gonna be much different.
Yes, month, two went well, and there were corrections, everything. I Bailey's got everything. Before you make judgment on it.
I'm not making judgment, Carmen.
If somebody's check is wrong, they need to come and talk to me. Not one person has come talk to me.
Well, we fell.
And a few that have, who, Jamie?
I'm not, I'm not naming it right now.
Why not?
Because it's not.
Why not tell me?
She's not gonna name names in public.
But you can accuse me. Everything was corrected. Anybody that came to me being corrected, it was minimal.
I mean, this is a mess, and.
It's a mess in correction. I'm doing the best I can, and I'm working with Tyler. I Bailey got.
Let me finish, just let me finish. I mean, this is a mess. You got a county, you get, you got a business to run. Um. The longer this goes, the worse it's gonna be, and so. Having experience with AS four hundred and having experience with other ERP systems, um. I, I'd like to be on that phone call with you to hear what Tyler has to say. I, I, I really would, because I, this, this is unacceptable. Uh, two hundred thousand dollars roughly spent and.
Nothing.
Nothing, and uh. I, I, I just. There's, there has to be something. I mean, no sense of urgency to get this fixed on their end or whatever.
No, no, we're working on it.
I, but, but we're working on it, but the thing is.
But every time they change it on.
Just let, hear me out, Carmen.
But the payroll is getting corrected.
Hear me out.
Maybe I can say something here, Carmen. Hear him out, because right now, you're in the middle of.
I'm in the trenches here.
You're, yeah.
And I tell you, everybody in this county is important, and I wanna make sure that payroll is correct, and this last payroll. If there was anything that was wrong with their paycheck, they have to come talk to me. It's not even fair for you to sit there and accuse me of being.
I'm not accusing anybody of everything, I'm saying.
Jamie is always accusing.
Well, okay, let's diffuse this. Let me finish, let me finish and say.
Something solid.
Just a minute, Carmen.
Let, just, just let me finish. I mean, all I know is. These things, the longer they go, they snowball, the problems get worse, okay? And so, I don't think there is anything. When we, if, if I can be on that phone call with you, is tell them to get their primo group out here, and this need, this thing needs to be done now. And you know what, honestly, I, I don't wanna, I'm gonna say this on record, but. The cost, it's not about the money. The cost is the people, the reputational part of the county. And if there are things that. We gotta get this fixed, and it's gotta be done soon.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I'm gonna, we're gonna spend a ton of money with I Bailey looking at this stuff when we know. I'm just so frustrated. They, this, this can't go on any longer, and I'd love to be on that call with you, Todd, because I don't think they could buffalo me.
Well, well, that'd make two of us, 'cause I've called them on. When they sent their latest off to the ladies, they were to start tax-wise in September. Well, then they came back and said, well, I guess we'll have to stay with July. Well, they've done that. And then what they're giving us isn't working. Now, get their primo team up here, whatever it takes, but the problem I've got with them is every time they will tell Carmen, all right, this is how you do it, that'll fix the problem we had last time. It doesn't. So then she goes back to them, and they tell her, oh, do it this way, and that'll fix it. This is like going to your mechanic who sold you an oil change. By showing you dirty oil that didn't come out of your car, and then when the car's breaking down, uh, just keep.
I, I'm more, I'm more worried about with the, the reputational risk of the county, the morality, employees, the, it, it, it just, you can't put a cost on that and.
If, if we can get payroll back into AS four hundred for this next payroll.
It's not possible. Payroll is due next week. It is not possible. All corrections have been made and, and made more to finish up this time, but those corrections are something that. I know you don't believe me on anything, but I'm telling you, I Bailey is our hope here to look at that and see they have been done correctly.
And I hope that's true, Carmen. I hope that the employees. I, I hope that the employees do come to you. They tell me they do, and they tell me they don't get an answer. That's why I'm bringing this up, but if payroll's not correct, budgets aren't correct, if bills aren't being paid. Then get the names of these people and let me know.
I'd like to have this, I think that this is.
But I'm not.
I think you should, but not here.
Little order here, just.
I think you should, but what, what, I don't think going back to the AS four hundred is, is necessarily the best decision to do, because once you go back. You, you are completely, um. Undermining the progress that has been made, if there isn't progress, but what I'm saying is, is once you go back, it's gonna become a crush, and.
I don't disagree, but.
And AS four hundred is, is gonna die. The Greens Green is gonna die. They, there's no support out there. I know we have local support, but I'm telling you, eventually the local, it will not be supported, and they won't be able to update it. And the problem with that, in the world of cybersecurity, in the world of information, uh, personal information security, you cannot afford to have outdated software. And again, it goes back to reputational risk and on the county, um.
Mark, you're preaching to the choir, honestly. So here's, this was my proposal. We go back to AS four hundred, and we get Tyler to either get it to work in short order. And in the meantime, we explore other options, so that, this is a very short-term thing, because Tyler is not working with us, they're not working properly, their software is not up to date. They haven't even figured out their own software.
Well, I, I haven't worked with any of this software, so, and of course, I don't do accounting-wide uh budget. Payroll and bills and, is what I'm trying to say, not necessarily just the budget. So Carmen has indicated that moving to AS four hundred is not an option in the, in the short term. So we, we have to work with what we have.
Right.
So.
What is our plan to work with?
Here's, here's, here's the idea.
To one, one uh comment, and, and, and I'm not trying to belittle Carmen here, but when I receive my paycheck. Outside of uh the county, when I received a paycheck from a former employer, the only thing I would notice, because you, you know, she uh. Talks about something that's incorrect, would be like if my hours were incorrect, the amount of deduction going to social security, going to my um. Uh, retirement fund, I don't know. I, so if that's incorrect, I wouldn't know.
Right.
Unless I sit down and I, I look at my uh employer's agreement on how much they're gonna deduct, and I get out a calculator, and I start typing it in to find out if that amount is correct. I wouldn't know. My accountant where I worked at, the accounting department, they took care of that, so I wouldn't know if it's wrong or right. So those are my concerns, is if our employees' benefits are being properly um paid for.
And we've had that, the Tyler software issue, problems with that.
So Mark is requesting to be on a phone call with you.
All right.
And I would highly recommend it, and I, as far as I know, Mark is quite versed in that area of accounting and payroll.
Legal side of it, and Mark knows the computer stuff. That's, that's great, but right now, I'm telling you from a legal standpoint.
The legal part, yes, you take care of that. Not a problem, but just.
I'm here to discuss as far as the legal part. We, they are more and more in breach.
And that, you can handle, but we need to get.
Well, I think it's time you turn me loose.
Well, you can. Um, I don't think this commission has a problem with that on the legal part, because that. I don't know, can I say it this way? That's your job as part of the state's attorney for our county.
But if I'm gonna be interfering with contractual relationships, even though we're in a legal standing, I need you.
Todd, I need an executive session to discuss.
Todd, I, I, I trust, I trust the un-legalies, you know, in the contract and all that stuff. Um, you know, I think, I think that. You know, whether you're overstepping or whatnot, I mean, the contract is signed, and, and I think you have full authority to uphold whatever is in the contract.
Well, I'll tell you what.
I think you're, to me, you're touching on.
Private practice representing a board, my advice would be, we declare them in breach, we give them thirty days to have a plan put in place. And make things better during that time, or adios. They're in Texas, so I'll speak their language.
Well, it's, to me, it's, we, we got, we got the, the legal part of this, which you have to handle. I'll say it that way, you have to handle. The other part is taking care of the problem today, and we need to, we need to work on that.
I came in here with concise. If this commission is okay with me enforcing our legal rights to the fullest extent as I proposed. Good. Then the next step is, we've already reached out. CTP can move in very quickly once we give them the go-ahead. And we don't have the travel problem that we have from the other side of the continent in Texas. So.
My question is, Todd, though, if we can't get accurate budget numbers right now, how do we know we have any amount of money to pay for CPT?
Because their cost is less than forty grand. Their yearly cost.
To, uh.
So this is what I wanna, here, let me just step a little bit where I didn't wanna do in a public meeting instead of executive session. I am going to let them know, we have another vendor willing to step in that's closer to local. And by the way, this vendor's also talking with the other counties in North Dakota with the new version of Tyler, and they're looking at stepping in, so.
Well, part of this Tyler's software is not that this AS four hundred would no longer be supported, but we're looking at different software was. But my understanding, once again, I'm not an accountant, accountant, is it would tie a lot of our departments together. So that if uh.
The alternative.
One department makes a change, it would be reflected across the entire, where each department doesn't have to manually walk over it. And so to speak, give the um auditor's department the change. It would automatically make that change. Am I even, I, if I'm not even sounding, make sense, that's fine.
It's an enterprise software, so I mean, it's every.
So is this, these other company that you're alluding to, would they be able to?
Yes.
Meet those needs?
Yes, otherwise.
Or expectations?
Yes.
Okay.
They're familiar with Tyler, they're familiar with the problems that Tyler's having with their new implementation in the last year and a half, two years. And the lady we spoke with there uh gave us every assurance that they could. Now granted, Tyler gave us a crap load of assurances, but then by their own admission last year, they bit off more than they can chew. And I'm sorry, I have a real problem with their overall price, especially with their methods.
Well, I'm only one commissioner out of, out of the five here, but if we, if there is a possibility of going another direction and get. I don't want to go with another company and we end up with a bunch of these problems again, and spending, even though we spent two hundred thousand dollars with this company, and it's, it's not doing what it needs. It, we need to, I wouldn't have a problem looking in another direction and just cutting ties with them. But also, what's our contract with them? Once again, that's in your department on how we could get out of that contract.
Right now to tell them, drop dead, give us back our information.
But I don't want us, and, and it takes a full commission here to make these decisions, but I don't want us to go another direction. And in two months have the same issues coming up. And, and now we've just beleaguered the problem. We haven't fixed the problem. That's my take on it. I just don't wanna be jumping from company to company to company, and a year from now, we got such a mess that we. That no one will even wanna take us off.
What I, what I'd like, I, I think we had to give this Tyler one last ultimatum.
One last after the four others that I've given them already.
No, I.
No, no, I, I agree with you.
Okay, but in the meantime, like I said, I'm really concerned about.
I just wanna know what our plan is for.
Just a minute, Jamie.
Correct.
I, I, I'm really concerned about the reputational risk of the county and what it's doing to the employees and, and morale and all that stuff. I think at a minimum, as we go down this road, I'm gonna make a recommendation, I think, and Carmen, don't, don't be offended by this, but. I'm not confident in Tyler as it is right now, but let's outsource, let's outsource our payroll to somebody, you know, so that we know.
Get the software.
That we know it's correct. I mean, there's, there's accounting firms that'll, that'll, that'll outsource it. It'll cost us a little bit of money to do it, but you know what, I'm, I'm really concerned about the. I wanna mitigate the, the ongoing risk that we have right now, 'cause it's, it's creating, it's fostering an environment that's gonna get worse, and so I.
Hard part is we have to have an accounting firm that understands the way the sheriff's office pay is done, because they're different.
I think what Mark's thinking of is.
Places that do.
Places that do it for smaller counties, so they would understand it.
I hear, I also hear what Mark's saying. I mean, it, it comes to a point that. Getting this, getting this as good as we can for our employees, I, I don't know what kind of price to put on that. It, it, but if it's.
Well, they'll be commercial, it's priceless.
Get, get on what he's, what, I think what he's trying to say is if we get to a point where our employees, the morale is terrible because of how they're getting paid and what's happening is. And that reputation is gonna go out there, so we're gonna have, we won't even be able to hire people, 'cause they're gonna say, well, you know, I go over from this county, 'cause you're not even gonna get paid.
So do you have a suggestion? Who do we go to? Can I go through NAACO?
Well, I mean, there's, there's multiple options here. I mean, uh, I, I'd go with a CPA firm of some, of some sort to do it.
Yeah.
That, that'd be my recommendation, and they.
I mean, you guys are the ones who are gonna help to pick it and prove it. I mean, you guys are the ones who are gonna help to pick it and approve it, I can't, I can't do that without the commission.
Hundred percent, but I, I, I'm just throwing this out there because I think right now, we gotta, we gotta stop the bleeding. And.
It, it's gonna come to a cost to the county, but we, for the employee part, we, we gotta get this right.
But if it's honestly, you're doing your best and it's still a error on the, then that's not fair to you to be blamed for it.
That's the thing, Jamie.
I do have a list and I hope those individuals have talked to and we can discuss that in private after. But still going back to bills not being paid and the budgets for department heads, how are we going to fix that right now? That these department heads can get some budget numbers, what is your plan for that?
Well, the thing, it just takes time, cause Tyler, I have to go through every single account to create one. And it's just giving the time to do that, that's the thing, it's just so. We're in AS four hundred. Those reports are already there, I have to create everything, but it's not that I'm not working on it, but I wanna talk about that outsourcing right now.
Let's.
Yeah.
How, how can we, what can we do today to? I, 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 it's not necessarily fix the problem, but correct as much as we can. And as Mark said, maybe we can outsource payroll and I, it's gonna come to a cost, come with a cost to the county, but I. I, I think we need to look at that and it's not. Taken away from the auditor's office, it's. The only, the tools she has today to use are not working. So we need to look in a different direction until she can get tools that are gonna work.
Right.
So.
Right now we're asking.
I, I'm in full agreement with Mark's recommendation that we outsource. At least our payroll to get that right, that we gotta get corrected.
Work on the other stuff.
I'm just cautioning that we find someone that understands the way our sheriff's office is paid.
I think.
Not every sheriff's office payroll is done the same in multiple counties, that's why I've talked to Nadako. And there's not a lot that use Tyler, but also use Garcia, so we need to find. Somebody that understands that because it is significantly different than standard pay.
Yes, Carmen, I don't know if this payroll is, is doable, just because of timeframe, so. We're probably stuck with Tyler for this one. But I'm gonna need, here's, here's what I'm gonna throw out there, uh, I'll, I'll help you get. I'm gonna need your help, but I can line, I can get three bids. Three competitive bids to outsource payroll.
Okay.
Um, I'm, but I'm gonna need your help, Carmen, and then obviously, once we get all that stuff, uh. What Jamie's talking about.
Do you think you need to visit with Sheriff Turner's in that?
That, I have no, no knowledge of that, and you'd have to. We'd have to really rely on, on you to be able to get all of that, but we, I, I can, I, we can get three bids to do.
Okay.
Outsource payroll, um. Yeah, and I think that's.
From a legal standpoint, this was.
Okay.
I was gonna wrap up, but you brought it there, so let me cover this before we get.
I think.
We, we got too many ingredients to make what we're trying to bake. Here's the deal, this has come down to a financial emergency. We are at the end of our first quarter. And we don't have, none of our departments have, because the software is not letting it do it. But payroll being number one. If this commission decides that this is an emergency, that we need to move quickly. We can do this in a quick turnaround bid without violating any statutes. Uh, we will need to put out a public notice, it can't be, we just, you know, three of us get together and pick our favorite counties. So what I would like you to do is to advertise for a short term CPA. Or equivalent to handle the payroll with familiarity with law enforcement. Payroll and county payroll. That way I keep you within the legal boundaries and we can address and get this fixed. As a legal matter, we do have a duty to try to mitigate, and we've been mitigating. Well, the problem has been to the point where it can't go any further. We can do this as an emergency stopgap. To either give Tyler time to finally get their stuff together or get gone. And I'm not looking at dragging this out where we're still screwing with Tyler at the same stage now. Six months from now.
And I don't even know how to. Put that in a motion and how we would even act on that, oh, to me, it's um.
It's simple.
It'd be a consensus of this commission that we allow. Uh, like Mark and you and Carmen to.
Solicit.
Look in another direction and then come to the commission with a recommendation and then we could make a, a vote.
Even if we need a special meeting.
I, I think you're, I think you're a step behind where, where I'm at right now and where Mark's at right now. We wanna get on this to get somebody that can come in and take care of payroll, starting the beginning of, of uh April. So that we don't have these problems and in the meantime, Tyler can do what they can to fix it, if they can't fix it. At least we've got that problem taken care of.
So I got one question, like can you tell you like, if they can't fix it, they're gone. What do we do with the two hundred thousand, do you go back after some of that or what?
That's our legal departments.
Okay, lawyers can be, we're called sharks on the civil side of it. This is where I shine, but we're gonna have to bring in an outside firm because I'm a witness. But what I'm looking at is. These would be direct damages that we would recover from Tyler if successful in the suit. There's further things that would open it up. Before I go into legal strategies, I would not wanna do that in a public meeting because for all we know, Tyler's watching this on tape delay right now. And. Uh, I, I, I don't hide the ball with them, but that's not the way to enter into, let's fix this problem or be gone.
I think that's right, I think that's something that. We do. In the process, it's, it's not something where we, we're gonna be doing today, but today, we need to. Get our payroll um taken care of, so.
But if we can get approval from the commissions to declare the payroll. Software issues have created an emergency. That we can do an expedited bidding process. For a payroll or CPA firm. To take over April payroll.
So I guess to Todd's point and kinda following up with Mark's, I think with next week's payroll, that's too short to get changed over. So I think we work through this with Tyler, send out a notice to all of our county employees that this is a software issue we're dealing with. Please be more patient than you need to be, but work with us. In the meantime, I think we should talk to the Association of Counties. On February eighteenth, I talked to Aaron Burst, there are other counties that have the same issues. Let's get together as several counties and then go after Tyler. That you need to fix this, cause it's not just a Mercer County problem, it's a Tyler problem.
Okay.
And then get Tyler on the phone with the group of you three. And make him correct these issues and if they can't, then we move on.
Again, we're going to a different part of the pasture. The question we were discussing is, what can we do to fix what we can right now, beginning today to get it working? And I agree with Mark and.
Casey, I have talked to Aaron several times about this issue. So Nadako is aware, but it's.
Well.
Not really his county.
I like what Casey outlined, I do, and you know, as far as a motion to get off dead center and get going on this. Um. Wish I wrote Casey's stuff down verbatim, but. What I'd like to do is Casey's recommendation, but I'd also like to just. The expedited bid process to get outsourced payroll.
Casey's recommendation we don't need to vote on, that's a plan. Uh, Jean said earlier when I came in, sometimes we're not supposed to use common sense, I disagree with that. One hundred percent, common sense is how we're gonna get through this. So what I'm looking at is let's find some way to get the most important thing that is causing problems and could expose us to litigation. Because of these payroll issues. Now, if we would get sued, we immediately bring Tyler in and they can defend it. But to get this problem solved, let's get this expedited bid process. If we can get that approved by the commission.
Okay, so uh, the motion would be to. To uh undertake an expedited bid process to outsort, to outsource payroll, starting.
As soon as possible.
ASAP.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Now, just briefly, because what you were saying, Casey, hundred percent on point. That's what we do after we've taken care of our people, to try to make Tyler work.
Yes.
And if they can't, we go elsewhere.
Yes.
So as you say, it's true, I'm recommending this motion pass.
So and yes, and I don't know if it's discussion for part of this motion, but. To let our employees know, we're, we're trying, okay? Well, we're, we're not experts, we're trying and we're gonna try and make, get it correct. Or as close, well, no, I gotta say, we're gonna get it correct in the end, but right now, we're trying and we, we're doing our best. So we're looking out for our employees, we wanna keep you guys whole, we wanna keep your retirement whole. And we're, we're gonna do our best. So I don't, like I said, I don't know if that's discussion for this motion, but I wanna get that out there.
Along those lines, if you would like. If, once this motion, if it does pass, I will send a employee-wide email. Uh, probably work with Alice to get that done.
She's on vacation.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think the word will spread pretty fast, that we're doing our best.
Some of the stuff I fill in for Alice, that's why I'm thinking of doing this. Just send it out, that the payroll's been an issue, it's a software problem, we're working on it and the fix is going to be. An outside company doing the payroll until Ty- Tyler can either be.
But it's gonna take time. The employees gonna understand that, there might be some errors in their next payroll, because we can't implement the new way yet. So bear with us, keep those. Whoever you contact, if there's something wrong with your payroll, let, let the auditor know. And we will.
Yep.
Follow up with that.
I think let the auditor know, but I also think they need to let HR know, because that is the person that they're supposed to go to is HR.
Right, yeah, and that, and that's fine, but let somebody know, don't, don't sit there and let it fester. And just um talk with your, I mean, complain with your fellow employees, move it up, move it up the chain.
Once we have the result.
Document it and we can get it corrected. It doesn't pay to just grumble amongst yourselves and, well, I don't know, wh- 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 what was the problem?
Until Alice gets back, if they've got questions, they can bring them to me, that's the email she sent out.
All right, any.
I just wanna read the motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so motion to undertake an expedited bidding process to outsource payroll for April? Or did you want?
Yes. Well, how about just.
Starting in April.
Uh, starting in April.
I, I need the legal wording in there. Due to an emergency. And it could be that simple.
Understood.
Your second would go with that also? How about that, this isn't as bad as hurting cats. I gotta find some levity in something this serious, they're all gonna explode.
Okay, one more time, read back the motion, Carmen.
Okay, due to an emergency, motion to expedite. No. Due to an emergency, um, to undertake an expedited bidding process to outsource. Source payroll starting in April.
Correct.
Okay.
And then just in the minutes, as far as what the emergency is, is that the software is not working.
To the best of our knowledge. The software manufacturer might say it is working, but anyway, okay, any further discussion?
I got enough evidence to prove that beyond a reasonable doubt, that's not the standard I need in this civil matter.
Okay. Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Uh, Rick?
Aye.
Jean, aye. And uh, like I said, I would like to see Mark a part of this, you and Carmen.
No, Mark, since you volunteered, I'm recruiting you, you're gonna go through this.
And if there's any other commissioner that wants to be.
Dislikeable substance with me.
But I'd rather it not be three commissioners, um, limit it to two, so if anyone else, any other commissioner wants to volunteer themselves.
Limit it to one.
All right, so it's just Mark, I won't ask why, okay.
Jean, I'd still like to discuss the bills.
Okay, so did we, okay, Billy?
So Carmen, I've had numerous calls about bills that aren't being paid, but we're approving them, so what is your process for cutting the checks? Cause I'm not sure it's not a postal system issue, but.
Soon as we get them and Mark's here to, um.
So like this thirteen, like, so at Bronson's, that check was for thirteen thou- or the bill was for thirteen thousand. What day did that check get cut, where did that check, because they still don't have it? And there's another entity that called and they don't have.
Yeah, and. But as soon as you guys approve them, then we put them in and. And we cut the checks the next day, I think, or that day if we can, but we can't get them in the mail until.
Is there a way you can, you can check to see if that check cleared?
Okay, I will, um, with the list that I have, just in the last week of bills, I'll swing over. That's what I thought you guys were doing, I thought that you were cutting them either day of or day after, but. There are significant bills that aren't paid right now and that's unacceptable, but if you're doing your part, we can't. We all know how the postal system's working right now.
So other than naming these particular, uh, Jamie can, after the meeting, probably mention these to you. And.
Yeah, Dawn?
Dawn was raising her hand in the back.
Yep, okay.
We greatly appreciate that, because it's been brought to my attention that there have been a few. Um, entities out there who haven't received payment from us and.
I don't have check numbers.
We don't have check numbers, but.
I have names and I have.
Okay.
Estimated amounts and they're recent, so they've got.
Cause we don't, we don't want any of our um suppliers or contractors to be. Sending anything to collections, I, I would hope they wouldn't, I thought, I would hope they would think we're gonna make our bills good, but uh.
But it's not a few hundred dollars, it's a few thousand, so it's a significant amount.
So on that note then, Jean, um, we're sending out an email to our employees and we're getting the payroll notification out there. Is this something that maybe we should put a public notice in the paper that our contractors and suppliers? That, you know, we are having software issues and please notify us if you are not getting paid.
Our editor's not here, I think this whole discussion is gonna be in the paper, so. Pardon?
I'm assuming it'll make the paper.
Yeah, I think this whole discussion will be in the paper, so I don't know if we would. I, I hear what you're saying, you bet, I'd like to let all our vendors know that, and I know there's vendors who don't get the.
County papers.
The, oh, the official. Mercer County Commission uh paper, so. Um, if, if they, if we need to reach out to them, we will, but I think the word will get out there and. We're, we're gonna make our, we're gonna pay our bills and we're doing our best to pay our bills, but we have this big software issue, so. Hopefully, we can work through it.
Doing checks and getting them mailed out within the two days.
And that's what I, I mean, that's what you guys were doing before, so I didn't think anything changed with Tyler, but suddenly. there's a list, but also the postal system is
Yeah, because a part of this too is
So I mean, I just got a check that was mailed out of Minneapolis from December and it just came, but that's, then we need to figure out a different solution to pay our local entities, or pay our bill, whether it's ACH something.
That's something I would like, possibly, you know, looked into as, like, uh, a particular business that we do business with on a ongoing basis, that if there's a way we could even, I don't know if it's a common practice in, in, uh
Other business?
If that you, do you like a, a, a direct payment, rather than you cut a check?
Yeah, I mean, uh, it, we've got, oh, i- in the industry, we've got about ninety-five percent of our payments being, uh, ACH or automatic clearance. Um, so, you submit it today, and it actually pays tomorrow, um, you know, I, I'm hesitant to tell Carmen to go do this right now and get this done, because I wanna, we have to get, we have to get a software that works. But, uh, I, I think
Correct, yes, I agree with, for now.
In the, in the near term, I, I think that should be, um, that, that'd be a wor- worthy goal to get as many of our vendors on it as possible.
And right now, all the employees that are vendors are getting paid their, uh, pay advance. Now, anything that we pay them like for their mileage or anything, that's ACH to their account, because we got them on that because of that, so it's just a matter of getting these vendors, I can't imagine
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna
I need their banking.
I'm gonna use myself as an example, so, when you pay my expenses, that's an ACH now, rather than a
No, no, you don't get a pay advance, so you're still
But you said
He was talking about expenses though.
You said Yeah, right, okay, so we got people that are on pay advances and they're actually a vendor, they have to be a vendor for me to pay them their check for that, always been an AP check. But now we turn, we put it on their bank, so that it's ACH as a vendor, and that's all it will take to do all these other vendors.
Okay, I'm, I'm not even gonna follow up with my question, because we got other issues here that need to be taken care of, so, yeah.
One quick question, uh, do I need to be here right now, I've got things I've gotta pop over and get done?
No, I think that was our biggest, like
Right.
The three things I added needed your input, they all rolled together, it was all software-related, so it we just need to have a plan for the future, because this isn't working.
One of the things that'll go off before the meeting's even over is the email I was going to send on the emergency movement. So, maybe that'll make the end of the meeting a little easier.
Okay, then, uh, you're, I do know I've had, uh, one department in particular saying they need their budget, they need their budget, they need their budget. But this all ties together with the software issue, I take it.
Right, but I'll work on that, the thing is, I've just, I'm worried the numbers aren't gonna be right. That's where, if I send out a budget, and I gotta get it pulled, I gotta pull it for everybody, but I'll try to do that by the end of next week, I'll try to get everybody's, cause I got two of them, I want it, the one, the end of January and the one for the end of February. And you're talking the expense reports, right Jamie?
Yes, because there's purchases that need to be made, and they don't know what the numbers are. And, and just period, we're going into budget season.
Oh, I know.
Most of them, plan their budget off of first quarter numbers, and we don't, they don't have them, which, if you're working, I, I get it, but you just have to have a plan.
As long as everybody understands, if there's something wrong, okay, but I'll try not to, and I'll pull them.
I mean, I did tell some, I said, well, I guess you might have to go back and look at manual numbers and go off of end of year numbers and see where you're at for some of these accounts, they shouldn't have to, but
Let me see if I can get this, I will get this done by next week, I'll get, get what I got pulled, and then we'll review it.
Okay, so did we cover your payroll budget, Billy?
Yep.
Okay. I don't think we need you.
Okay, I'm here, if you need me, just buzz me.
All right. Now, we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Hey. Thank you.
More paper, so if you need it.
Casey, I called the error dollar. We can, he doesn't have any, uh, we have to put up signs to be legal right now. He's gonna check into it, but it would have to go through
Just to get through the
See, what happens is, if they, if they pass this here today, can you guys vote this here in today? At sixty-five thousand, I'd have to put up signs, but this year we'll go on to our, uh, load pass, and go on to our webpage. That's how it works. Okay, it'll go on to the PDF, and this year is what will come out on our webpage, is this here, this is, take it off our webpage. Okay? Something I talked to Jeffrey from, uh, McLean County, and I talked to a couple others, and I'd like to see that also. So, if something, something down the road would have to go
We can pass the, the motion here today, and this afternoon is on.
Yes.
Or we can pass the motion in February, and then, whenever the state comes north of the interstate you can put it on.
Right. See, next year, what would happen, uh, see, he has my email, so what will happen next year is that in February, when it goes on the south of the interstate, we'll do that see each week, and then, so, we'll have
Right?
This year I may not have it, so that's my word.
Don't gauge, but, I'm sorry. It's wrong for them, just not, they don't know a thing.
Everybody around us has their gun, so nobody can come into the but if they do come into our county, we can't, it's already signed.
So we'll have to communicate after this, and then figure out are we gonna advertise it? I'll try to put some wording together, oh, sorry.
Do you have a bit of the motion on that restriction? I always forget to write it down.
Twenty-five oh two? Okay, Bowman made the motion.
It's gotta be noted, it's gotta be noticed, and I understand. But I think, I think that's what it was really to, like, the climate emergency, we might be able circuit that, the whole bidding process.
Well, I could, I could have I can, I can have the signs put up on Monday, I can have two crews, I can have all the and, uh well, Monday, you, I'll be pulling a block of trees, and yep.
I think Right, yeah. That third one should be five eighty-three, and the third one should be five eighty-two. That's just how I'm changing.
Okay. I'm not guaranteeing anything, but, okay.
Yep, they're not, and this should, that stays correct, but they need to now be
Okay.
So, yes, this is five eighty-three.
When I send out the draft, will you work it? And, and email me back?
I got circles.
Hey, can you help me set, can you sign this? Email when we got her down.
Okay, our five minutes up?
Yes.
Okay, reconvene, highway department, county road restrictions discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, I talked to, well, first, I, we don't have road restrictions up, they started, they came on last week in our area on Monday. Um, the reason why ours aren't up yet is because they didn't have my email address, and we were trying to I, so, we didn't have a chance to vote on it, you guys have to vote on this here every year. So that's where we're at right now. If we do vote on it, this year, uh, Frost Law, we'd, we'd have to have signs put up, because if we don't have signs put up, it, it's not legal, you can't give somebody
Enforce it.
Right. Um, if we vote on it, this year we'll go on to our PDF on, uh, our website, and it would also go on to load pass. And then we wanna know what, what signs you would, you'd like us to put up, because I think we talked about that when Ken was here, you were gonna change them. And I don't know if we have the correct signs yet, so, that's the other thing.
I think you guys just blacked out.
Okay.
We did, we, I do have, I do have some of those, but I don't know if I'd have enough for the full county, I could, I could do our numbered roads right now, but I can't do our options right now. Okay.
Okay, the road going, I'm gonna hate to open up a can of worms here, but as here is, here we go. Mercer County twenty-seven goes north of Hazen. Okay, I'm gonna highlight that one. Mercer County twenty-one, that goes north of Buella, right? Okay. Are we gonna address our cities and tell them they can no longer haul garbage up our roads?
I, I, that, that, that's up to you guys, what you wanna do, I, I wouldn't do that, I mean, I
Okay, that's a leading question, I'm sorry, I worded it that way. All right. I have gone out to the Mercer County landfill, and I've asked for weight slips. One city garbage truck rolled across there, and I asked for the front axle and the rear axle separate. Tandem axle, fifty-one thousand pounds. They're averaging over forty thousand pounds on a tandem. Even the state regulations are thirty-four thousand on a tandem. And I get these load, they, they've been going up, Mercer County twenty-seven, twenty-one, Mercer County nine. The one, the one just east, uh, by the Buella there that goes towards the county shop.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Nineteen, yep.
Up nineteen, and nineteen was a six ton per axle weight limit. How is our cities, um, getting out to our landfill?
I know where you're coming from, there, there you have to cross some of the roads.
And they've been doing it for the beginning of time. And I do know that people see me drive a semi, and they wanna get heartburn, because they see a semi going down the road and I'm wrecking the road. I, I run legal weight, which, um, a multi-set of axles is sixteen thousand pounds per axle. So, on a single, on a tandem, is thirty-four thousand, seventeen thousand pounds per axle. That's all I'm running. When you have these other entities going way over that, and they, what I'm getting at is like, County twenty-seven north of Hazen. That hasn't been damaged in all these years that I know of, and there's been a garbage truck going up and down that road
Three times a week, at least.
That, well, three times a week, and I don't know how many times a day. But, my one trip with my semi loaded legally is wrecking the road supposedly. And I brought this up before, on County nine, uh, north of Highway two hundred, the first mile or two is beat up, and now there are a couple egg producers north of that, who don't even go south on nine anymore, because we get calls and complaints that we're wrecking the road, so we drive different directions, and that, and County nine, two miles north, all the way up to County twenty-six you, 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 you could put the sheriff out there and sit there, because you can drive eighty miles an hour on that road, it's, that's how smooth it is. And that's where these, um, egg trucks are driving, and we drive twenty-seven, we drive, or east-west on, uh, twenty-six, we drive over to twenty-one. And it's not a problem, so
So what do we want?
I guess, who is this?
I, I, they're not in a, what do we, what do we wanna do?
I'm, I'm not sure, because I don't wanna shut down our cities from not being able to haul garbage.
I agree, that's what I, I wanted to know, what you guys as a commission would like us guys to do.
I, I, I personally am okay with following the state regulations, which is sixteen thousand on a multi-set, seventeen, I know there are, um there's been some discussion in other states have been going to, where you go like sixteen per axle, no matter how many axles you have, so you can go up to like a hundred and forty thousand pounds, I think that's what Montana is, I'm not sure, I don't wanna quote that, but so, when, when you're running, and most of the egg people are pretty darn good about, uh, I mean, there might be a few that don't care what shape the road is in. Um, are you running across any issues with the roads being beat up because of overweight?
The only one that I have, uh, was on was up there at Cabin Site One, they were hauling rock. And I went up there, Rick, and, uh, they're gonna do some paving up there, and I went up there and they had some rock haul to that cemetery, there, that one is in tough shape. And that's that pavement, but that pavement's only three inches thick, so it's probably a eighty thousand, sixty-five thousand pound pavement, you know, it's not made for heavy loads.
Are they running legal weight though?
I don't know that.
Okay.
I, I, just looking at it, I doubt it. You know, it, it, it's really drove that road pretty tough shape, and I was gonna bring that up too.
Because I do know, on Highway two hundred, there are trucks hauling product up and down that road, and they're running way over.
Yep.
They're running like a hundred and fifty, and that's a state road, I get it, it's not the county's jurisdiction, so to speak, but they're way over. I mean, they're, they're, I've heard of a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty. So, and those are commerc- those are commercial entities doing this. So, I'm I, I just have a little bit
The gravel roads I've been on right now are looking, actually, really good, I, I don't have a problem with the way the roads are looking right now. Um, you know, the other thing is, right now, counties around us have load restrictions on, or road restrictions. So any person coming into the county has to follow those road restrictions, so right now, they, they can't really come into the county being overloaded, you know what I mean, on our gravel roads and stuff like that. So, uh
Well, I do know it's, uh, the rest of the commission, but my, mine, uh, my, what I recommend is that we just follow the state, what the state recommends, because, um I'll load, I load my truck, you know, legal, and if I'm running all the way to, well, I haven't been hauling to Enderland, but so I got three miles of county road I gotta drive, and there I can only put on sixty-five thousand pounds to drive two hundred and fifty-one miles, but two hundred and but three of it, I, I can't run legal, you know, so, I and it's, it's tough enough for our egg producers out there the way it is, now if we got an egg producer beating up a road, I get it, and I don't know how we could circumvent some kind of ru- rule, or, um, uh, that would, would say, well, you know, these people are exempt. And if we have a commercial entity move in and they're running a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty thousand, and it, it comes to just a dollar figure anyway. So when I'm running a hundred and twenty thousand, if I load my truck to a hundred and twenty thousand and I go down the road, it's a dollar figure.
Right.
And I don't lose my license, I just wanna let the public know that.
I, I agree, the other thing is, you'll say if we, if we, um, wanted, I talked The other thing is, you know, say if we, if we, wanted, I talked to some of the other counties and they say they're just doing some of their numbered roads. Well, legally you can do that, but it's not, you're not going to be covered, say if, say if somebody takes twenty-seven, you know, there, it's all going to be ineffective on the load pass. So it really doesn't work out that way, where we can just do a few roads here, a few roads there, you know, and just do some numbered roads, we can't, we can't get away from that, it ain't gonna work. You know what I'm saying? See, I, I'd like to put it on five and seven just to protect those roads that are in bad shape. Once you put it on and you vote for it, it, it puts it on load pass and it's gonna do all the roads, they're all gonna be at sixty-five, they're gonna be all at sixty-five thousand or eighty thousand, you can't pick and choose your road.
The state said one eighty, right?
Yes.
On a tandem.
But then it comes back to the legal part of it to where the only roads we can enforce are the ones with signs on it.
Right.
So.
If we don't have any signs up, legally they can't give a ticket, or you can give them a ticket, but you're, you're gonna get away with it. You don't have no law that's down.
So we could pass this load restriction requirements and you could put signs or the highway, the road department could put signs where.
If you need signs, I can put one day where I, what I have, until we get their other signs.
But you could put them up where you feel it is most important, we wouldn't have to do the whole county. Does that make sense?
At least we can get started until we order more signs or whatever.
Right.
What, what Alroy is saying, on load pass, there's no way to just say, we did twenty-seven, five and seven, it's the whole county.
Right. That's what's gonna come up on load pass.
But legally we can't do nothing about it if there's not a sign.
Right.
So wherever we put signs, we can enforce them, and we can protect those roads.
Right.
So you're saying that you could put signs on twenty-seven and restrict twenty-seven, and that's it? No other, no other road in the county would have a restriction then?
Well, I don't think, I think if you were gonna restrict them all to, let's say.
No, I'm just trying to get it.
Well, let me finish it, if you restrict, restrict them all to eighty thousand, let's just use that number right now. Eighty thousand, we're gonna put the signs on twenty-seven, twenty-one, five, whichever ones, those are the ones that we can enforce. The other ones are be restricted, but we actually can't enforce them until we get the sign.
That's right. You know, I, if we were gonna run twenty-seven with garbage truck, I'd just leave it off of twenty-seven, you know, so the garbage trucks can run, because you, you have to have any of these going on. And I know they run up nine, I know they've been running up, you know, they come across twenty-six and they go up twenty-one, you know, they use nineteen. And they also used state road coming out of Buella, you know, on, on forty-nine there too.
So maybe you could share some of that information with cities that
Right, right.
For the spring, use this road and this road. Don't use all five different roads.
We tried to get the garbage trucks to stay off of nine a couple of years ago when it was really bad, you remember that?
Yeah.
They just drove nine, they hadn't begun. I don't understand, it wasn't.
Well, there, it's like, maybe, you know, it's like you said, whether we, going on the case, he said, I wouldn't even just deal with, I would tell the city that this is what they need to do if they can't follow the rule. Then we, we will call them and we'll enforce it.
Put a sign on nine and have the DOT watch it.
You know, I mean, we got, we can work with them, but we gotta figure out, if they don't want to work with us.
Gene, what you're saying on these class twos is to use the state's right foundation, which is eighty thousand versus the sixty-five thousand, is that what you're saying?
State is eighty?
Yeah.
Or, and then that.
And I, I do have some eighty thousand, GBW, and I don't know the axle on the gene, I'd have to check that, I, I didn't look into that because we kind of went away from that before, I don't know if you remember that, and they, but I can check that and I can get back on what the axles and stuff are on that. I think eighty thousand, I think those were eight tons per axle, if I remember.
The eighty thousand, seventeen thousand on a, on per axle?
They were.
Yeah, so your trailer, you got the tandem, that's thirty-four. Your drives tandem, that's thirty-four, that's sixty-eight, and then your steer's twelve, that's eighty.
Juan, what did we do, like, we, did we take the max off last year or we put it to eight, we did a change last year?
We went state.
We went to state, right, so.
Whatever the state regulations are.
Right, so.
So it'd be eighty on a tandem.
Still be able to use the signs that we had because we did this last year.
Yep, and I, I do have some of those, yeah.
See, and then when you go to a multi-set of axles, it's sixteen thousand per axle, so you could go forty-eight. So then you could go forty-eight, thirty-four, is seventy-two, and twelve is, no, did I do that right, eighty-two, and then twelve is ninety-four. But then you're also restricted on your weight.
Can you come up here and show you guys what you have?
Yeah, well, we, I mean, we still want overall, even if your axle up, you still would be on eighty thousand overall.
Either the signs that they used to put up, all the, remember, and then what we did is they put teeth on the bottom and they just put axle weight limit six tons.
We did that one last year.
Yes, definitely, you did that.
Cause that's where your math comes out at the eighty thousand.
So if that's what you guys would go with, I, I'd have, I could do almost all of the roads except for probably three or four.
It was like a couple of weeks he would have them.
And then I'd have them the rest of, yeah. So that's where we're at.
Well, I, my, my, just my personal, and of course, my personal take is if we would have a road that's getting beat up, then we could put some restrictions on that road, but if we're not having issues, then I don't see why we have to put load restrictions on.
Like I said, the only one that I've seen, and I've driven all the roads in the county, and the only one I was on was that pavement, and that's about three miles and it just goes into Cabin Site One.
And that's been kind of rough for a while, that's.
That was bad last year, we patched it and stuff, so they're gonna pave their portion inside, you know, with their assessment, so they're gonna do their pavement. So I said, why don't we just wait with that until next year and then we'll do a, a pavement on that and get our portion done.
And that would be, what I would recommend is if we have a particular road that's got issues, is that we could put weight restrictions on that, on that particular road, not just blanket the county.
Yep. And as a commission, how would you like that, would, say, I'm seeing County seven is getting beat up. Should I let Rick know and then you guys want to just have kind of like an executive deal and if we need to fix it or put?
What, what's that?
Say if we need to put road limits on this here road, like County seven or something, how do you want to do that, if we're gonna do it in the middle of the week, you're gonna do, how do you vote on that? Or do I get?
We'd have to wait two more weeks or whatever.
Yeah, do I get to do that?
I still think by passing this as a blanket, that gives the road department to put signs where they see fit. And wherever there's a sign, that's restricted, where there's not a sign, there's no legal restriction.
Right, that's what I'm saying, we have to have, so you guys gotta vote so we, you know, cause you, you can't have an executive session for every road that we have to put on, that's why you say that.
I hear what, I get what you're saying, Casey, I'd have no problem with that, but so Alroy just gets mad, or whatever his personal take, and he's just gonna go out there and put load restrictions on every road then.
Well, at least Gene's.
I, I know what you're saying.
Is there a reason that this list went back to eighty thousand versus?
That's my three miles.
Actually, what they did is they just printed out, that's what was up on the website, so she just printed it and that's how it was.
Okay, cause, because last year we did go to eighty, so why, I'm, I'm confused why it says sixty-five thousand max because that's not what we did last year, so that should have never.
This is probably the old one yet.
And that could be too, but, did she, did she printed it out this morning for me, so that's why, I'm not sure why it's this way, so.
Okay, well, one thing that I would like to add too is like, we got number three on one oh five five there, we got Mercer County seventeen. I've had a couple of calls on that, maybe we should, I just thought of it, I was sitting there, put a, I mean, you really can't restrict the whole road, but we should put some type of notification that there's a ten, ten-ton bridge, because there's, can I get across there, what do we, you know? You know, just let them know ahead of time before they, when they turn on there that it is a ten-ton restriction up ahead, you know?
And if you guys want to vote on it and just kind of put a blanket on, Gene, what we can do is that, I have to let Rick know and, and I, I don't know how you're gonna do that, you know, as a blanket deal, you know?
I mean, I think if we're gonna go to the state, then that gives Alroy the flexibility to exactly sign what he wants. And I guess if there's signs in places we disagree with, we can have that conversation.
Is that a motion?
I'm trying to decide if I want to make my husband mad today or not, okay?
Okay, I'll make Anthony mad, I'll make a motion to put on the state-recommended load restrictions and then leave it up to discretion of the highway department, road department to put the signage where they see fit.
All second, eighty thousand.
Yeah, can we then, can we then have this updated?
Yes, and I'll, I'll talk to Rachel too, I don't know why it's that this year, but we'll, we'll do that too.
Okay, I got a motion and a second.
Casey, you got room?
Is there more discussion?
No, I guess I just want to clarify, we're, we're at the eighty thousand, just to say, we're unrestricted on.
Jael's got a few rooms open.
No, we're kind of, it is full, it is full.
I'm all in with that then.
Full moon with little rocks.
Okay, hearing no further discussion on the county road restriction. Casey, how do you vote?
Aye.
Ark?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene, nay, motion passed.
At least somebody sticks up for Anthony.
Okay. Now I have to move on because there's no more discussion on that item. Code reader discussion.
I'll let Dennis talk about that, you do it for night, you know, I'm kind of, I'm kind of agreeing on that, so.
That's not how you said it to me.
Okay, you agree to what, what that basically is, is, you know, everything, even in your vehicles, everything is controlled by computers now. So they call that the ECM, and that's basically the computer of the hard drives, the whole thing. So basically what these code readers do, when you get into heavy equipment, it's a lot different than your, your regular vehicle, car gears. What that will do is, it will, if you have a check engine light on, it will tell you what it is, and, and it could be just a simple emissions light, which would allow you to still run it, but the ECM controls everything in, in that truck, so you can only run it so long, if, if, if it's an emission failure, it'll probably let you run for maybe about thirty to forty miles, and it'll put you into, they call it lint molder, then you're only running about twenty-six miles an hour. So it's impossible then, you know, a person can probably get it back to the shop, but with that code reader, you can get it out of the lint molder. Whereas we would have to load it up, have it haul down to Bismarck, they'd have to put it on their machine. You're looking at probably eight hundred dollars to get the truck down. It's, you, you can manipulate by ECM, you can make it do all kinds of things. With the emissions, we call it a burn, it's a regen, that's, if you're not familiar with the regen, what it is, is it your system builds up a certain amount of soot, whatever, and then the regen will automatically kick in, it's, it's, it's dialed into the each machine probably every ten thousand miles or whatever it'll regen, and it'll clean itself up. Well, sometimes it won't let it regen, and they do have a button where you can push to regen, but the ECM will not allow you to do that. Where you, with this reader, you can go in and tell it we want it to regen, and it'll regen and clean up. Basically, it's, it's a very, it's a necessary tool nowadays if you want to do repairs and find out what you actually have going on, whether it's critical, whether it's something you don't have to worry about too much. But they're not cheap, as you can see, and there is a software that you have to upgrade every year.
Okay, that was the question from last meeting, cause I know you can order an OBD reader for my Chevy pickup, it's, I mean, you can get them as, just to do the check engine light, probably for thirty dollars, you could do one that does the check engine, the ABS, and your airbag for like a hundred bucks. And then you came to us saying you knew, you wanted to get a code reader, and I, what was the quote, in the thousands? So that was our question, why, what makes that? Did you just want a glorified code reader?
Yeah.
Or is it a code reader that you need for like the
Heavy equipment.
Heavy equipment, it's different than what for my Chevy pickup?
It is, yes.
Okay.
And the thing is, these would be the same code reader, like say the, your dealership uses, you know, and you have to have the software. Cause they're, like, even in, in some city vehicle code reader, we've got one of those, we've already had some working out, it'll tell you the code, but it'll tell you you can't clear it, you have to take it to the dealership to have that done. And this, this code reader will allow you to do that because you have the software, you have the software for like say the International, you'll have the software for Freightliner, the Cummings. Steve had checked into it, everything that we have in our fleet, this, this code reader would, would cover.
Okay.
And then if you saw, you know, Mark gave us the price of the nine nine nine, I went online and I checked out the exact same code reader, and they all range from eleven-five to, you know, fifteen-five, so he has given us a pretty good deal on it, so.
So you're saying eleven thousand five hundred to fifteen thousand?
Yes, yes, and he's given it to us for, well, just a penny under ten, ten thousand.
Yep. Okay.
So in essence then is that you, we purchased this, it costs ten thousand dollars to buy it, we, we're gonna spend two thousand a year, but I mean, we do five or six times, we get down to, I mean, in time it'll pay for itself.
And the same, if you look at the bill after, it's twelve hundred dollars for checking coal.
Right, there's, there's one month, there was two different ones, and I'm saying that, you know, we could fix everything, you know, that it's gonna tell us, you know, because there are two, sometimes you get into where especially tools.
But it might tell you to shut it down and save the engine, or, or something you could use.
You can have a faulty saint oil pressure gauge, well, your ECM, it's, it's gonna tell it to shut it down, you know, well, we can find out that maybe it's just a faulty gauge, you can override that, you know, and, and run the truck, it may still have to get down to say Bismarck to the facility, if we can't do it, but we could probably, if it's nothing crucial, we could still run it.
So what you're trying to say is you could drive it down there to have it fixed rather than haul it down there or have it towed down, okay?
Well, there may be times that it may have to get towed down, you know.
I understand.
Right, right.
I, uh, just, out in the industry, this thing's gonna pay for itself in the first three months, I, I see this as being a no-brainer. And the ongoing software each year, I mean, that's just to maintain it current with any updates to the ECMs and everything, and with that, I want to make a motion that we should procure this for the highway department.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, now we can have some more discussion, any more discussion?
Well, just like the twelve hundred dollar bill, plus you have freight down there too, so you're at two grand per incident.
And within, and over time, it's, I mean, it's investment that, that's not gonna.
Well, it gets worse and worse every year with the computerized everything, I mean, it's the age where we almost need it.
And the other thing is that we're asking the county highway department to do more self-performing than we've done in the past too, and so there's going to be more of it too. You know, you're gonna, rather than one or two times a year, it might be five or six times a year.
Okay, any further discussion? Any none, Mark?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Gene, aye, motion passed. I'll bring my truck down there when Mike. No.
I got a question on that, okay, so you guys approve this, so then if he gets me a voucher, can we cut the check?
Yeah.
I just wanted to verify, cause your quote didn't say approved nine thousand nine hundred nine. You just approved them getting this to him.
Yeah, so he'll get, he'll get an invoice for you and.
Okay.
And I'm not, and I'm not sure, I think it comes with the software. I'm not positive.
That's what he said.
Yes, I think, you know, it will come with the, the one-year, um, software.
And I'd much rather see it, uh, with the, with the voucher, you're gonna have it to the penny rather than ninety-nine-nine, you know?
You gotta, you better tell them, was that in the motion? The dollar amount?
No, we presented scanned tool.
Okay. Cause if, if the nine thousand nine hundred nine-nines in the motion, then if it's ninety-nine cents more, then you gotta come to us again. But since it's not, yeah, okay.
I think, I think he's about that.
Gone over that before.
Just, just to clarify, this quote though, so.
There you go.
And if it comes to a thousand dollars more, then you, I would recommend you come to the commission again. Asphalt purchase agreement.
Right now, we're using, uh, MC eight hundred. We're, uh, trying to run that out. We should be down next week or the week after to about sixteen hundred gallons. Then we can put this here MC three thousand, and this here, we'll, uh, mix with it if you don't have too much of the, the other stuff. Uh, this is a thousand dollars a ton. We're gonna try to get thirty-two ton. We got thirty-two thousand, we, we, we actually got thirty-five thousand in our line item. But the freight on it, they, after they charged us three thousand to bring it, and so we might go over a little bit on that. So that's why we're bringing it up. I do probably need it, uh, towards the end of next week or a year, probably be out.
Okay, do I have a motion for the?
I'm going to approve the MC three thousand.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? Any none, Jamie?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed.
I gotta add more to it, but it's, it's.
Cause we need it.
I was gonna say, uh, something.
Carefully you're not overloaded when they bring it in.
Yes.
Do you want to talk about the garage doors while Elroy's here also, cause he's part of that?
I can do that.
Do you wanna talk about the garage door quote, cause it's for Jim and for Elroy?
Okay, sure.
So we ha- you have it in your packet, but Jim gave me his for those shop doors we talked about last time. And then we got the Sally Port added, and then Elroy got his doors added as well for those seals. It's got the yellow caution.
I do have, uh, I have eight doors. We have six over in Beulah, um, one in Hazen, one in Golden Valley.
I think it's backwards on, or just, right? I think your Beulah-Hazen is backwards.
Yes, it probably is.
Okay.
But, um, I, a total for our doors is gonna be six thousand three hundred seventy-two forty-four. And then we, uh, I didn't, we have four more over in Beulah that are cold storage, and I said, we didn't put that on because it doesn't pay, you know, in cold storage.
Okay.
That's where we're at, yeah.
So I would make a motion to approve, um, Jim's total for his doors is four thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety cents. And Elroy's total for the eight doors is six thousand three hundred seventy-two forty-four. Okay, hold on. I can get, I can bring them over to you, Carmen. Six thousand three hundred thirty-two, at what's that?
Three seventy-two forty-four.
Three seventy-two forty-four.
So I, I do have one other thing yet. Before we do, Jamie, I did not do the sheriff's department, do they have their two doors? We don't, we don't have that.
Dive bay?
Yeah, dive bay, yeah. I did not put those two on there yet because we didn't have that. So I don't, I didn't know if Jim had that or the sheriff's.
Jim did not put that.
So there're probably gonna be two more on there. Can I get that information? I can measure them and stuff over there and get that for you? Would that work?
And I do know they need it, cause you can see they like.
Cause their, and theirs has the biggest possible. So I would also add the two sheriff's office doors.
They might be a fourteen by sixteen also, but I'd like to, I'd like to make sure.
I'll second.
Okay, hold on, I'm still not done yet. Okay, so we got Jim's quote at the forty-five twenty-three ninety cents. And the county road, six thousand three seventy-two forty-four. To approve these quotes along with, you said the two sheriff's office doors?
The bays.
Two.
Dive bays.
The two dive bay doors.
Two dive bay doors.
There's two of them, right?
Unless we. I can't imagine Terry wouldn't want them done, but.
And that's your motion, Jamie?
Maybe.
They need to be.
They need to be done.
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I'll second.
Well, and they, I mean, you just cleaned all the most stuff out of there. Yeah, I'm doing the sheriff's office, you can.
I thought she didn't, I thought I seconded it.
You did.
Okay, uh, Carmen, can you read back the motion?
Both move to approve Jim's quote of four thousand five hundred twenty-three dollars and ninety cents. And the coun- the county road quote of six thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars and forty-four cents. Along with, along with, um, two dive bay doors.
Okay.
We'll have to figure that, we'll have to get those measured and figured.
I, I will do that. I'll get that for you guys right away.
Yes. Yeah, you just need to get us the figures now, but you can go ahead and get it done.
Okay.
Because we included it in motion.
I'm guessing that's gonna be right around, uh, two thousand. I, what I figured here, just roughly, it's gonna be sixteen fifty-two forty-four plus your, um, travel and stuff. So you're, you're gonna look right around two thousand.
When, when they do it, they'll put the quote in separate, so it goes, not from the highway department.
Okay.
Cause it goes to a different budget then.
Okay.
Okay, any further discussion? Any none, Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion passed. Okay.
Oh, we got left this home road charter, I believe, the budget discussion.
We've got, um, are we done with that budget discussion?
We can't really talk about the twenty-five budget really much, like, we need numbers to have these budget discussions.
Okay, done with that one, so now we're down to home road charter. Here?
Yep.
Where do I sign? No, that's buyer.
It's on the second page.
That's contractor.
No, it's right here. They'll sign here, date it as chairman, sure title.
Also sign right here, buy.
Yep.
Chairman? And today's date is?
Three twenty.
Twenty-four.
Thirty-five.
Five, yeah, okay. Twenty-five, yeah, you're getting old. You bet. Any, you got anything else? Okay. Garage doors.
We get that.
Uh, home road charter.
So I added that to the agenda. I just wanted to bring it to the commission's attention that I think the current financial environment we're in, we're going to need to look for other revenue streams. I think one option is to go through a home road charter, and there's a lot of different, parameters you can put on those charters to where you can either change your mill levies, you can implement sales taxes, you can do different things. I would like everybody to kinda look at, into that a little bit on their own, so that in the future, we can have a more in-depth discussion on some of those options.
And I just wanna add a little bit, I don't wanna beleaguer this a whole lot, but my understanding going with home road charter is it doesn't change, necessarily change a lot of things, but it gives you, uh, you're able to do additional things. I'll, I'll use the word things. That you, that are, you're restricted to right now, whereas with a home road charter, you, you gotta, you get more options that are available to you. Okay.
And then you have to spell those out in each individual one?
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm not against it.
Just before, and it, I mean, there was pros and cons.
Yeah. Okay, uh, all, what we have left is portfolio updates and review vouchers, am I correct? Okay, portfolio updates. Uh, Jamie, go ahead.
Um, Candy just sent me a text, she came back from Bismarck, she sold some scrap metal and made a couple thousand off that, so that was a plus for her. Um, it's been dry, so she hasn't had as many issues as last spring. Uh, I've got a couple of meetings this afternoon, and I've got a few boards that continue to overlap on their Thursday afternoon meetings, so. Jim's been pretty quiet, everybody's been pretty quieter than that, just meetings this afternoon.
Okay, Mark?
No updates.
Rick?
Uh, fair board, we've got just about everything ready, um, in place, uh, under budget, so we're in good shape there. Attention office, we, um, had our, on Monday, we had our, uh, portfolio reviews and all went, all went well. Planning and zoning, Casey called and reminded me, and I forgot anyways, and I didn't show up for the hearing last night, and, uh, the road department and the sheriff's department, uh, we pretty much went over all of it. Some of the biggest complaints I've heard was the, you know, the budget numbers, they didn't have their budget numbers, so. And we're not gonna fix that right now, so that's all I have right now.
Okay, Casey?
Um, I did have a water board meeting yesterday, and it was pretty minimal. We did approve the permit for the Glenn Murray, uh, storage units, and then, uh, we discussed some of the ordinances rewrites, and then last night, we had a P and Z public hearing on the ordinance rewrites, and basically just took input from public. I think it was well received from what people did show up, a lot of different individuals from industry and a few people from residents in agriculture. Yeah. On my own, I've been doing some stuff with the legislators and stuff like that, but, uh, have not been making much progress, so I guess there's much to talk about there.
They are gonna sign the, um, House Bill twenty-two seventy-seven for the foreign peace officers on March twenty-seventh, also at the Capitol, so.
March twenty-seventh?
I believe it's March twenty-seventh at four.
Next week, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else, Casey?
Nope.
I got one I wanna add quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, when you mentioned, uh, with the fair board and, uh, legislature, uh, last week, uh, myself and a couple other board members met with the Senate, uh, Agen Veterans Fair's, uh, committee. And they, uh, recommended do, uh, do pass on the, um, their, uh, a hundred thousand dollars for each county or each fair in the, in the state. With a three million dollar cap for everybody, but to each one would get a hundred thousand. Right now, it's sitting at a, um, a hundred thousand, we would have to match that from the county level to, to get the grant, but it's a grant from the state, so. We still need to go through the, uh, appropriations are next, and then it'll be, you know, onto the, the floor. But it's been going, we went through the House, uh, Representative Novak is one of the co-sponsors on that bill too.
Okay. Well, I had a airport, uh, meeting, uh, the, I guess, the only thing to point out there is their reserve, got a resurfaced runway, so they're go- getting, gonna get bids on that. Uh, weed board, uh, I guess the highlight there was, uh, having an early, um, chemical, date. Um, they're looking at March thirty-first to April eleventh, and then doing the regular, um, chemical dates starting June second. So I, I think they, I think they passed that as far as I know, so they producers can pick up their chemicals starting March thirty-first right now. And there, there was some other discussion on, uh, building and warehousing it, but that's gonna be down the road. Other than that, I don't have anything else, so. That's it? Meeting adjourned?
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry, can't adjourn the meeting yet, sorry, bills. I was done.
Oh, that brings me up.
Thank you, Jamie.
In, in my training class. Jean, in my training class yesterday with, uh, NACCO, then they had in there that some counties do that to where they designate certain people to approve the bills. And then we just make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
That's up to this commission, I'm not opposed to it.
Maybe we could look into that a little bit, but that would save us a half hour every meeting, pretty much.
Yeah, but, so then, uh, there would be.
Carmen, where are these five laptops?
Couple commissioners kinda meet before or after?
It would be kinda up to, you know.
Are they like replacements for what people already have?
I assume it would be like a subcommittee, but we could look into it or review on, look into it more on the NACCO side of things.
Uh, no, I'm, I'm not opposed to it, that, yeah, that is up to the rest of you guys.
Yeah, so Ashley gave us a really good list of that, now we got that, that's when they gave us, this is what needs to be done.
I think it's something worth looking into, cause I thought about, is there any way we can get the bills ahead of time and just?
Online, yeah. Cause they're all printed.
Especially if we can go to the ACHs. Yep.
So what were they doing?
They'd have, I don't know exactly, but.
Well, I'm just gonna do Jamie's famous line that she loves is, well, that's the way we've been doing it since I've been here.
And she's the youngest one.
I gotta check the back of my head. She hates that. Well, that's the way we've always done it.
Like, I literally hate that, well, that's the way it's always been. What is that, right?
But no, it's.
It's the way it's always been.
Oh, so you are open to change?
Yeah, well, I don't like change, but I'm open to it if it's not working.
Yeah, it would be nice if they would do a season, put a poll on, too.
That's the one that scared me. Why does Michael Berg get that?
I mean, this, some of them are, some of them aren't.
Carmen?
Well.
Can you cut this check?
Huh?
Today, and I will hand deliver it. Yeah, when you say, what do you mean hand deliver?
I will, I will have the check this afternoon, and I will take it.
I'm getting one. Yes. This is a issue. Yes, it is, and. Things happen where, yeah, and then they were calling hand or.
Come on. Why do we do it at the one year or something?
I know the circle last week.
Your schedule's okay. You can stand it, yeah. So.
We're waiting.
I fill out an expense sheet.
So if you can do that, I, if I can pick it up.
Well, he goes through it and proves it.
Three thirty-two.
Well, now my total is off by three cents.
I will.
So, is he supposed to get ahold of me and tell me I'm off by three cents? So I've told like, and the other entity I'm on the board is, no, don't even bother me. I said, I don't even know why I put down a total, because ninety percent of the time, I got it wrong anyway. And that's the final. I'm more likely gonna be wrong, cause I did a wrong calculation. So I get what you're saying, I have the total there.
Can you get an updated employee list of hardware here for people that are wrong?
This is already the final, cause we went through them. I agree what you're saying, but I don't know, I'm talking.
Candy, Jim.
They've already been through it.
We, we.
But there's like nobody for the sheriff's.
I understand his prospect.
So I've charged twice.
But if.
These are wrong even already.
And I got bad.
Okay. Now, I'm, I'm gonna be the devil's advocate here. So they have, you say we approved that, so they have a total there, a hundred dollars.
It's one of the big ones.
And we approve it. They go through the bill, they go, oh, that's only supposed to be ninety-nine. So because we approved a hundred, did they get the hundred? Or did they? See, Jean, it's the sheriff.
They've already been through it. They are the final, saying like you said.
Yeah.
We're approving it, and what they.
So you're saying that should be totaled on there when they hand it to us?
So it's not going. It is what it isn't, here, like this.
Media is gonna have deductions, so they're not gonna get the full seventy-five dollars.
Right, so I mean, that's like, it's not gonna come out like this one. They got, he, the way he, the way he did.
So.
He calculated twenty-five, twenty.
Calculated twenty-five, twenty, well, forty miles at seventy cents is twenty-eight dollars, so.
So you're saying that Mark?
You got one here.
You want Mark to have a total on there? By the time we get it.
Now you got one here, that is true, now, so that makes that wrong too then, that's what I'm saying.
I'm, but that's what I'm asking, you want Mark to have the total on there? Not, not Jane Wolf had.
I don't care what Jane Wolf, but when he, when Carmen and Mark come, come.
Give us the bills, you want that?
These should be.
Okay, now I follow you.
I'm assuming they're right, because I'm trusting what they did is, is correct.
I follow you now.
Yeah, that's what I look at.
Calculate the deductions before they give them.
I don't, I don't question what Dave guys do, I, when I get it from, this is what is accurate and true, and that's what I'm looking at.
Gotcha, I follow you.
Cause you guys have already went through everything and did all that paperwork, the ready man lays down there.
Yep, I follow you and, and I, yes, I don't necessarily disagree with that, because when we're signing, it should be what the final is.
Yeah, and they've already done the.
Right.
Lightwork, if I want to put it like that.
Yep. I follow you now.
Cause just like you just said, well, this one's wrong, that one, that's why we, when at the end of the day, it should reflect that, that's what we're approving them.
Yep, after we approve it, it shouldn't need to be changed anymore.
Right, because we've already.
Gotcha.
Two cents.
Seminar, huh, she's gonna be here this summer event, will we? She went to her seminars or whatever, says her trainings, so she'll be back this summer event.
Yeah, they, uh, she was back on us fall already.
It's just as always, fully, it's always hard to, you know, we gotta be all, everybody.
I think she likes working with Brad, so I think as long as that combination is there, I think that's gonna be all that.
Unless she gets an offer for better job.
Okay, we, we need to see, at least we're attached this to it. I'm not gonna blow our little twenty dollars from Mark for that, but.
So who's overseeing this Donovan and Kifer rewrite of our zoning ordinances?
General.
Okay, so I'm just, I know, I guess, I'm just asking a general question, how that's coming along?
Nobody had, that's what the hearing was last, after they did, did I miss? Didn't work it.
Well, to that point, Oliver Comey last week discussed theirs, well, theirs is higher.
Well, he was a little month behind in December and then he.
All, all of them, doing their ordinances too, and they were giving that last week, because it's a lot higher.
Keys. I just had like sixty dollars worth of keys done.
For Sheriff Jamie?
Carter? Yeah, I see him.
Okay, I was just wondering, I was like, what the, this is the monthly service.
Where's Dan, is he hunting?
Sick.
Only sick?
Was last night, so.
I know he's gonna be going on a South African hunt, but I don't know, I suppose that's next, that's a ways out.
For the advertisement?
Well, we just, no, I was just wondering if he, he got that.
I do not see that. I'll pick mine up, I'll be on it. But I was looking for a public notice too, I don't even see it, but I think what the deal was is that's in the hazing paper, the deal papers.
I usually buy both, whatever.
And we have the same one, we call.
Case.
The front, some of them are, some of them aren't. The common part is you're not the best. Yeah, that's what it is. So, things going up every year.
Is that? Is this for the year?
Yeah.
Sandy, Sandy.
It's for a month, month.
Okay.
Makes sense, Sandy, cold.
Yeah, we got. Four other ones, I don't know. I have a question for you, but I'll do that for the, for some other stuff. That's another one that's after the fact, do you know? What do you do about that anymore?
Rents.
You're like, what do you do?
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, goodness.
I've talked and we've bought that twice already about you.
It's Murphy Hill, it's already done.
Why is there three copies?
Oh, hey, you're looking at that case, I'm hoping one.
We need to be good at this truck. Got a public toll twenty that match? Make it budget for twenty-six.
Eight cents? No way.
Yeah. Uh, that's from the.
Oh, that's, uh, Indian, is it? I don't think I get that.
The check is gonna cost more than eight cents.
You would have to sign, um, this is easy. Does this one need for, um, all their, their, um, classes? That one, that one.
How people's in which department, but they didn't recognize the signature.
Cash for equipment.
What can he get for twenty dollars and sixty cents?
What asked him?
I sent him your way, cause I said, if, if we have it, we need to get it, because they need it.
Well, we could probably cancel that post office and he's, and we just have Jamie deliver all the bills, you know?
I mean, I'm kind of for that, but because. I just got a new horse, so I can point express this. We, I could really get my money out of this.
Ah, I think we'd have to.
That was mailed in September, came returned mail last week.
Pointing expresses ten days, ten thousands today.
I think we have to.
Ten days might be the whole service.
I think we'd have to okay that with your daughter to use that horse, or you.
Yeah, I thought that, but I quit the hospital. So if you want, I'll sort this point over.
Something tells me that's her horse, not your horse.
Did you talk to her yesterday at Senex, is this why you say this? She told a lot of fun stories at Senex yesterday, though. A lot of people learned a lot of things. About my five-year-old. Do you have a list of checks? Checked on two-three? Jean? Do you have a list of checks you need checked on? You can stop by my office if you have a list of them.
Okay.
There's a golden bell, Minnesota. Two sixty-five, a few.
We don't pay the tax on it.
Just start with.
Yeah, it's still, uh, forty something for the.
I'm looking to approve those.
Final second. She's gonna move to approve them, final second, so.
Yeah.
Did you get anything back from, uh, we had sent, I know you sent the email out to the people gonna review their stuff, did they respond to you, like the highway, highway department, the road department, uh, sheriff's department?
The sheriff's department did respond to that, like, of their vehicle list and stuff for insurance. Oh, yes, they did, yes.
Were they, were they?
They were all accurate.
I didn't know if anybody ever responded.
Yep, they did. I don't know if the road department did, I do know that, like, Ash. No, I called Rachel, she said, yes, every one of them. Yeah, yeah, okay.
I know you sent the email, but I never saw them, who sent it, the results were. Stay ready for stuff.
You don't know what they are?
No, it's just like the.
Choice, that's what you'd be.
You don't have, you just pay it, that's all, you don't have a choice. Carmen's supposed to go.
Right, so I had a meeting with the tribes, and he said, then, took the tribe, but it's.
Well, then that's one of my.
Hospital.
Trying, he's trying to work on relations.
Man, I can't say enough, there's a three-quarter story.
Yes, we are, Jean.
Nice cold coffee.
Cause some people, some people pay a premium for that.
They can.
They can.
You might have to remind me a couple more meetings about vouchers at the end, I'm so used to doing them at the beginning that.
Oh, we might change it again.
Yeah, but thing you used to, don't change it. Don't wanna do the thing where you're going over.
Jamie don't like things the same way old things.
I'm not very good at change, but I'll accept change if it needs to be changed.
Not very good at change, yeah, but you also don't like it, that's the way we always.
I know, because it's not always right.
Boy, tough one, please.
I'm curious why we have a phone there, there.
Was it, uh?
We all have cellphones and stuff, why do we have at least a, like, that one, and that one, I don't know, nobody's there. It's expensive.
Is there, we have any kind of security there?
Huh?
You got any kind of security system there?
They call your shots?
No, I mean, cause.
And you need. Or maybe they got for, uh, wire, wireless?
Yeah.
Could be that, yeah.
But, definitely, okay. I have a motion and second to approve the vouchers as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Casey?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Did I miss anything else on the agenda?
The adjourned.
Hearing none, meeting adjourned.
The adjourned.
In another two years, if I remember.
Jamie wants to pick up this check. I'm glad she'll do it. I'll go in there tomorrow, go in there, essentially, I'll go in there, I'll be the most. I'll, I'll pray in the before.